Whereas the 19th Amendment was ratified on August 18, 1920, which granted American women the right to vote. And whereas 72 years after the Seneca Falls Convention, the 19th Amendment finalized women's right to vote, one of the last barriers to women's enfranchisement in the United States and empowered women to allow their voices to be heard through the political process. And whereas today, 93 years after the ratification of the 19th Amendment, women are making a difference in our local, state, and national elections by ensuring that their votes are cast to affect chains at all levels of government. Now therefore, I'm Michael Dever, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, to hereby recognize the anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment and celebrate the women who worked tirelessly to advance the causes of justice, opportunity, and prosperity for all Americans regardless of gender. Margaret, could you come up and get this? Thank you.[59.28][59.28][applause] Thank you very much. Glad to meet you. Take care. Very good. That's on your birthday, too. They did that. Speaking of your birthday. All right. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And all matters listed on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussions on these items. If discussion is desired, then the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. To the consent agenda, I'd like to add claims to 296 vendors Is there an item that the member of the commission would like removed from the consent agenda?
Mayor, if I could, item two, which is the claims that you just mentioned, and item number 4A ordinance number 8895 authorizing the sale of the Series A and Series III bonds.
Very good. Thank you. Is there an item from the consent agenda that a member of the public would like removed? Seeing none, I would ask approval of the consent agenda minus number item two and item 4A and with the addition of the claims to vendors.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Farmer, seconded by Commissioner Riordan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Mike, can we speak to number two?
Mayor, several months ago, when we were talking about Rock Chalk Park and the way that the claims would be made and the payments be made on that, we had a discussion about that it would be on the consent agenda and part of the claims package. I had talked to Dave, and I know several of you had mentioned it, too, during the meetings about breaking the payment out. You know, the payments go to Rock Chalk Park. I mean, my record on voting here obviously has been one of against. I will keep that up at this point. There'll be times that I won't do this throughout the process, just so everybody knows that, because, you know, it's not going to change my opinion, but going through the process. But I want everybody to understand, there will be any time that payments are made, that they'll be broken out and people will be able to see them. So that's my feeling on that. The other one on 8895, on item 4A, just is, again, consistency and vote on that item.
Okay. So would you like to approve the claims minus the Rock Chalk Park item?
Yeah. If we could have two different votes tonight.
Sure.
And then, you know, as I go through them from time to time, you know, as I see those payments being made, I'll ask to have them pulled on the ones that I see.
So I'm going to ask for a motion for the full claim total minus the $126,372.92.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schum, seconded by Commissioner Farmer. All in favor, say aye.
Approve. Excuse me. All the claims less that one.
Right.
Okay. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Is there a motion to approve the claims for Rock Chalk Park for? Very good. Motion by Commissioner Schum, seconded by Commissioner Riordan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes for one with Commissioner or Vice Mayor Amick dissenting. And then item 4A, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Schum, seconded by Commissioner Riordan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes for one with Vice Mayor Amick dissenting. Very good. The city manager's report, please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. Few items in this week's report. Jonathan and others have worked on the launch of a Facebook page that got a number of city documents of a historical background. So we commend that to your review and reading. If you want to like that page, we would appreciate it. We're starting the rapid inflow and infiltration reduction program, starting off with some of the initial testing in certain neighborhoods to find out where some of the leaks are in the system essentially. And you see that, and we'll be obviously trying to do a good job of letting the community know that this is underway. As you know, tomorrow evening in this room, from roughly 5:00 to 6:00, we're going to have a public meeting where we can respond to questions and any items that may come up as the public gets a chance to look at a draft ordinance for rental registration program. We understand that you all have not spoken to that yet. We think it was good to try and see if we can get any of the comments, perhaps even make some amendments to it before you would consider it if we think that those are appropriate. Our wastewater treatment facility received an award, which you see there. And then we've got a couple of mid-year reports from Public Works Department, an update on micro-surfacing work that's underway. And then a pretty extensive report from our engineering division. You see a lot of activity on a number of different projects there. Be happy to respond to any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions for the city manager? None. Thank you, Dave. Some good stuff in this document. If anyone wants to read it, it's the engineering report is quite substantial.
The only other thing I would point out, and I know, Mayor, you and other commissioners are very much involved, really want to take a tip of the hat to Megan and all the work that a lot of other city employees and other community members have been involved in the 1863 commemoration. I know the actual day is tomorrow and the Twitter work and the events over the weekend and things like that. A lot of work has gone into it, and I think it's been well received. So appreciate their efforts.
Yeah, it's been great.
As I said, as I told you yesterday, enjoyed your comments Sunday evening at the commemoration ceremony. It was really, really well done. So thank you.
The new exhibit is great, and the concert was great. At least the part I heard, I had to go to a birthday party. But I really appreciate everyone showing up and honoring the past and I think appreciating the people that have moved to Lawrence forward since its early days. So thanks, everybody in the city who's helped with that. And yeah, the Twitter thing is tomorrow? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. For those Twitter followers, it'll be interesting.
Started tonight. He Twittered about 5:00. We will, we ride. So it's pound QR 1863.
Very good.
You know what that is?
Mike?
I think so. I'm learning. You're teaching me.
Very good. Okay. We're going to move on to the regular agenda items. Now I want to remind everybody to silence their cell phones, please, and that there's a time limit for general comments on the regular agenda items. A four minutes. At 3:30, you'll hear this bell, and that will be your indication to wrap up your comments if possible. First item on the regular agenda is to consider requests for a time limit parking in front of 305 East 7th Street.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. In February, city staff received a request from the property owner at 305 East 7th Street requesting time limit parking in front of their business, indicating that when the library moved over to the Borders building temporarily, that parking started occurring all day long in front of that business that had not been the situation before. In March, at the Traffic Safety Commission meeting on the 18th, there was one downtown business owner that appeared and spoke in opposition to the request, indicating that she thought that there was sufficient short-term parking in the area, but there was a shortage of long-term parking in the area. The Traffic Safety Commission did vote unanimously, eight to zero, to deny the request. And so now it is before you. And with that, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions about this agenda item?
Mayor, if I could. So traffic safety only considered that site that is in front of 307 there?
That's correct.
And the parking that's on the east side of that alley, that's long-term parking all the way to the next corner there at, was it Connecticut?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions, Dave? Thank you very much. Public comment on regular agenda item one?
I have an applicant.
Just come on forward and sign in and state your name.
Waiting for somebody else.
Sure.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I just have a short thing to say. This is my block, and we celebrate this business at the end of the block. They seem to have a steady roaring clientele. But they are a small neighborhood business in East Lawrence. They are not part of downtown. They are over the line in the neighborhood. And the parking garage is going to be done really soon at the library. Is it end of August that it's going to be done? And I think that will relieve some of the pressure on the parking. The last time I understand you did this, it was for Jensen's Liquor during the football games, because they were, everybody was blocking their traffic. And Round Corner Drugs, when there was construction next door, and Tom Wilcox had elderly customers that he needed to get in. This doesn't seem comparable in terms of pressure. I also might mention that the tax office is so popular that during tax time, there are people blocking the alley, stacked up, two cars out. They're just not as courteous as they could be to their neighbors, so I would assume they'd want to cut some slack to a downtown neighbor that wants to park there. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jared Hummerkhaus, the owner of Hume's Tax Service. We also run three businesses out of the office, H&amp;H Appraisal Service and Gardner Insurance. Like stated before, there was never a problem in the previous 18 years until the library moved to Borders, and it's created a big problem for us. I just would like to be considered, even though I'm two and a half blocks off Mass, now that the library's over there, it's like I am on Mass. And would like to have the same opportunity as people down in that area with limited time parking in front of the business.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Judith Dutton, and I am a downtown business owner. I spoke against this request when it came before the Traffic Commission on March 18 of this year, and assumed that with unanimous decision to deny the request, that the matter was settled. That it has come up again reinforces my experience with the owner and employees of the tax service, who seem to believe that their business deserves special treatment. I certainly understand that the tax service would want two-hour parking in front of their business. That would essentially stop anyone who works downtown from parking there and would give them parking primarily for their clients. Their business has at least two private parking spaces next to their building, but it seems that they want those spaces for themselves so they won't be inconvenienced. Parking is limited with the library temporary located adjacent to them. And, but that lot has a two-hour lot. I mean, it is a two-hour lot there, and there are frequently places. And in fact, when I drove, left work today about 5:00, there were no cars parked on 7th Street in that block at all. I want to give you a history of my experience with this business, just a short history. In January of last year, I left work. It was a cold night. It was a rainy night. It was dark. And I found a wet piece of paper on my car. And it stated that as Monday morning, that that space would be restricted to Hume Tax Services' clients only. I went into the office, asked who had placed it there, and someone said they had done it. I talked to them and said I understood that parking was tight for downtown, for all of us. And I knew they weren't used to that, but that it was a city street and that I had a right to park there. Two days later, I again parked outside the street, parked on the street in front of their building. And one of the employees came outside, raised his hands in the air, and yelled at me. I was pretty shaken up, went on to work, and at that time, decided to call the police and report the incident. They told me that would be recorded, but nothing could be done at that time. The next time I parked in front of the office, I returned to my car several hours later and had a $55 parking ticket on there for parking 13 and a half inches from the curb, when the ordinance says 12 inches. They had called a police officer to come out to ticket my car. When he tried to talk them out of ticketing, they insisted that he go ahead and give a ticket because I had broken the law. So I was feeling pretty harassed and anxious at that time. And once again, I drove around the block and called the police. The officer who had ticketed my car came to my home and talked to me about it, asked me what I wanted, and I said all I wanted was to be able to park peacefully wherever I needed to park on a city street. At that time, he went back down to the business, talked to them, told them to, you know, leave me alone, and called me after that and said he thought the problem had been settled. Unfortunately, it had not been settled. A week later, I again parked in front of their office. That morning, one of the men came out, pretended to look in his mailbox, way before mailtime. I locked my car and walked away. When I returned to the car around 1:00, the same man who had come out when I parked there in the morning came in and came out again and began watching me, tried to maneuver out of a tight parking space. After a little bit, I rolled down my window and asked if there was anything he needed. He said he was just watching me. And I waited, and again, I said, is there anything I can do for you? He said, I'm just watching you. And when I said, I prefer that you not watch me, he said, oh, I'm just watching the dog across the street, and went inside. I drove away but stopped again a couple of blocks to call the police to say I was ready to file a disorderly conduct complaint against them. This is what the officer had recommended when he had come out to my house, yet this had not been settled. I was beginning to feel uncomfortable and not knowing what would happen yet next. I was both anxious and angry about continuing to be harassed for simply parking on a city street. On February 15, Officer Mark Leisten came to my house, picked me up in a patrol car, and took me down so I could identify the man who was continuing to harass me. And he did order, he did issue a ticket for disorderly conduct at that time. During this time, I also spoke with Mayor Schum, who told me that six months earlier, he had been asked by Hume Tax Service not to park in front of their building. And while he said he would agree to do that, he said it was a city street. This behavior is the reason I'm less surprised than I might otherwise be that they're here again, appealing the unanimous decision of the Traffic Commission, even though they did not show up for the meeting the night that this was on the agenda. So that's my personal story with this business, but it's not the primary reason I oppose the granting of the two-hour parking. We all know that parking is tight downtown, and it's very difficult for the owners and those who shop downtown. And that's obviously being addressed at this point with the parking garage. I'm a psychotherapist in private practice, and I would love for my clients and for myself to have parking right outside my door. My clients have to pay a parking meter or park in a two-hour lot, which is just as close as the tax services to a two-hour lot. For myself, I have to walk a couple of blocks at least to find a parking place. And so again, I understand that they would want this, but it sounds to me like they're asking for special privileges at this point. This will be alleviated soon. And what this does is just, if it's granted, it will just allow them essentially private parking for their clients, and they will still have their private parking. So I'm asking once again that this request be denied, to grant it with inconvenience even more of the many other downtown business owners who are having to look for places to park and who don't have their own private parking. And as a community, I believe that we work together and that none of us deserve special treatment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional public comment? Okay. Back to the commission. Anybody have any questions for staff or related to the Traffic Safety Commission's comments?
Just one question. David, did, so what was requested was two-hour mark the tire kind of parking for the two-hour?
Yes, I believe that's correct. Right. It's time limit parking there so that people have to move in and move out.
And we don't do that anywhere else in town that I'm aware of other than, you know, on this temporary basis?
I think that's correct. There may be some zones, but I'd have to look at the city code to confirm that.
Was there any consideration given to metered parking along there?
No one brought up metered parking, but that's, you know, that's, there's metered parking, you know, within a half a block of this location, so. But Traffic Safety usually doesn't deal with meters themselves. Time limit and that type of thing, they do. But the meter requests usually don't go to Traffic Safety.
Okay. That's something that we handle at this boardroom.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, when I was down there this afternoon and Judith, I was there, I think, 3:00, because I had a meeting down here. And there had been, there was one car that, you know, had been there since 8:00 this morning. I'd gone by earlier, so, you know, I know that there was, you know, at least one vehicle that didn't turn over all day. But I don't know if it's, I mean, I understand the Traffic Safety Commission and not hearing, I guess, from both sides of this when they heard it back in earlier this year. But I wonder if it's something that we ought to consider, a metered parking along in there.
Okay.
Since I was mentioned in the statements, I think I know a little bit more about this than was presented. First of all, as I recall, at the time where I was asked not to park in front of the place, which I agreed to, I just parked further on down the block. It was during their tax season, and I guess the tax season is anywhere from December 31st to April 15th, which is pretty busy. And I understand that, and I think KT Walsh even indicated it at times, there's lots of traffic there. So you're talking about a three-or-so-month duration where they have a lot of traffic, and that's good. I'm glad their business is well. We're real close to opening up this parking garage within a couple weeks, I'm thinking. And I would rather see us wait, if we're going to do something, let's wait and see what effect the parking garage has on this situation. And maybe it goes away. The other thing you have to remember is if you put some kind of parking control device there, then you're going to have to bring your parking control personnel all the way down there to monitor it, which, I don't know if there's two spaces there or three, but either for two meters or three meters or three spaces for a two-hour lot, it's not very cost-effective, I wouldn't think. So my inclination would be that since it's out of tax season and since we're almost very close to seeing what opportunities are going to exist in the new 325-space parking garage, that we wait and not do anything right now. Concur with the Traffic and Safety Committee.
Okay.
One of the things that was mentioned. I'm sorry. One of the things that was mentioned was that there was available parking two-hour within half a block. Is that, is there typically availability there? Do we know?
That's in the Borders Lot. That's all two-hour parking in that entire lot there. I don't know how often it's available, because we don't control that under our division. But that's where the two-hour parking is available within a half a block of this business.
But it's likely during the day that there is some availability there.
I would think so.
Okay.
I drove by there earlier today, and I couldn't help but, and I couldn't help but notice that there's five off-street parking spots behind. And then, I don't know, I was just trying to problem solve here and, you know, understanding the need to mitigate traffic in front of the business and maybe figuring out an alternative solution. And I may want to suggest to the business owners that Pastor Paul Wynn, the pastor's the first temple church of God in Christ, something like that, right there at Seventh and Connecticut, to perhaps utilize his spaces during busier times, that it wouldn't become a parking lot. But if we're talking about two spaces, my inclination is, and I parked there during the campaign. It was on a non-church night, and I was walking in East Lawrence, and there wasn't a sign telling me that I couldn't. But I can't imagine having an issue with that as long as it doesn't interfere with their programs. But I've got, you know, I'm kind of in agreeance with Bob here that, you know, let's see what the library does. And I think there's other solutions rather than putting time limit enforcement or meters here that would be more appropriate in this situation.
Okay.
Let me suggest, rather than concurring with Traffic Safety, why don't we table this item until after the garage opens up, as suggested by Commissioner Schum, and look at it again in 60 days?
Yes. You might want to wait till 90 days after the garage opens so people get used to it.
Yeah, well, yeah, whatever.
Well, can I just, I mean, that's a good suggestion, but I guess I'm more along the lines of, I think there are some better solutions than, you know, than waiting for that, that, you know, because the parking garage sure will release some of the pressure, but it really won't happen until the library leaves Borders. But I just think that there are some alternative things that maybe the business owners could consider. And I'm especially bothered by how rudely Ms. Dutton was treated. So I wouldn't vote for that, to table it. I mean, I, you know, I don't think it's going to do any good to bring it back in 90 days, because unless the library is complete, it's really.
That's true. There'll be a lot of parking still at Borders. And that lot is pretty full these days, until the library is gone.
Well, if you want a motion, I make a motion to deny the request.
Did you want to say something?
Second.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion to deny the request for time limit parking in front of 305 East 7th Street by Commissioner Schum.
Ask him again. He wanted to say something.
I know. I asked him, but he sat down. Did you want to speak?
My name is Isaac Gardner, Lawrence, Kansas. Unlike what Mr. Schum said, it's not just a Hume's Tax from December 31st to April 15th. I'm the owner of Gardner Insurance. It's in that same office. So I have clients coming in every day, all day, at the same spot. So it's not just a three-month window that you guys were talking about.
So it's busier all the time?
Yes. There's a full-time insurance agency there.
Okay.
Which I meet with clients pretty regularly.
Well, what I was referring to was, at that period of time, it was maxed out. That was the, that window is the maxed-out time when there's the most amount of action. So I didn't mean to preclude there's not any business the rest of the year. So thank you.
Okay. So there's a motion on the table by Commissioner Schum and seconded by Commissioner Riordan to affirm the denial of denying the request. So unless there's further comment on that, I would vote on that. Is there, all in paper, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. The motion passes for one with Commissioner Amick dissenting. The next item on the agenda is consider approving the rezoning of approximately 5.09 acres of land from IG General District to IL Limited Industrial District. Aye.
Good evening. Sheila Stogsdahl, Planning Staff. We have just a few slides for you tonight to describe this rezoning request and what the Planning Commission's discussion was. The property is, all of you are very much aware, I'm sure, is at the corner of East Hills Drive and K-10. And it is five acres and has been zoned IG since the business park was first developed in the early '80s. The factors that the Planning Commission considered in looking The factors that the Planning Commission considered in looking at the rezoning is that when you go from IG to IL, you are still keeping the property in the industrial inventory. The fact that this property does, while it's five acres, it has some pretty substantial challenges, there's about 40 feet of fall from west to east, from east to west, which will certainly affect the size and, and location of any building that would happen on this site, and the fact that it has been vacant for 25 years. The applicant proactively restricted 21 uses that are allowed in the IL District, some of those were actually permitted in the IG District as well. And then the code eliminates for additional uses that are the more intense industrial uses, the truck stop and storage of explosives, mining and intensive industrial. So what we focused on with our analysis was really the additional uses that rezoning to IL would provide to this property so that we can weigh what you have on this site. And this slide shows you those additional uses, it provides a wider range for marketing the property, including having some of those financial and commercial uses. We thought this would be beneficial to the industrial parks in terms of being able to open it up and have some business service uses available there. We did highlight the three uses, fast order food, drive-in, food and beverage, and retail sales general, to specifically ask the Planning Commission to discuss, because we felt like those were the more intensive of the commercial uses that might not strictly be more of a park service kind of use. So their discussion in the minutes really focused on those issues, whether the site should be available for business park services or pulling traffic right off of the highway, looking at the traffic issues that are associated with that because of the intersection issues that you all have been discussing for many years, and the reason that we put a traffic signal at O'Connell so that we could get most of that traffic moving that direction to get into the parks. And also just the gateway aspects of this location right at the entrance to the business park. After that discussion, you do have a recommendation for approval with a five-to-one vote, and it is including the restrictions that the applicant originally proposed and does not restrict any of the other uses that staff had asked them to discuss. So you have this recommendation, if you choose to act on it and also adopt ordinance 8891 on first reading.
Sheila, in our packet of materials, there's, I guess it's referred to as a map, and it has a subject area, but it has two lots on either side of it, they're designated as A and there's, what is that?
Those are both outside of the city limits, so they're zoned ag.
Oh, is that ag?
And they both happen to be cemeteries. This one was the pocket in the farmland plat, and then this one has, has always just been a pocket in the East Hills plat.
Got stuff planted there, right?
I don't know.
Did you say cemeteries?
Yes.
Are there people buried there in both places?
As I said, I don't know.
Franklin Cemetery, a million years ago. I think there, it's still there.
Sheila, there was a fair amount of discussion about safety coming in, and I think one of the reasons that the Planning Commission decided that a fast food and a, someplace that had sold gasoline and food would generate about the same amount of trips. And the discussion with that, my understanding is that the staff and, and the Planning Commission thought that even though there was increased traffic there because of the signalization of that, that that would be not a big safety issue, we wouldn't have to worry about that, or? You were there, how would you summarize that?
There was discussion about, why didn't you restrict gas and fuel if you're suggesting drive-in food, that was part of the discussion, and, and the reasoning was that gas and fuel is allowed today in the IG District. And so we, we did our analysis really looking at what were the expanded uses, not looking at trying to further restrict uses that, you know, the applicant wasn't suggesting that he give up, that are today. The issue on the safety, the traffic signal is not at this intersection, you know, the traffic signal is at O'Connell. And our intention or our hope is that when farmland, street connectivity to East Hills is available, that the folks that have difficulty getting in and out of East Hills because of the traffic safety issues at, at this intersection here, will be able to utilize O'Connell and drive through farmland to get to East Hills, you know, and avoid this intersection. So our discussion was, should we add additional uses that might tend to pull that traffic off the highway as opposed to uses that might serve the park users during the day or on their way home or that. And the Commission also, I think, seemed satisfied with the fact that at any point when there's a project proposed, there would be a site plan which would then go through a review process with KDOT and have the opportunity to really look at a specific, you know, traffic analysis at that point.
Yes.
Sheila, on those 5.09 acres and looking at that topography, there's gonna have to be either an awful lot of fill or some detention, serious detention on there somewhere. How much, how much, I don't know, how many acres of that property can really be developed, is really developable ground, and how much more than the 50,000 square feet of gross area are we talking about here? Any idea? I mean, the slope of that is incredible.
The likelihood, I think, would be that you would have a multi, you know, a two-story building where you could have access, you know, from two different sides. You know, but you're gonna have to have, you know, a series of parking lots and that. Yes, we don't anticipate it being necessarily a large building, but you could have, you know, a multi-tenant building and maybe a, you know, a separate building, pad site kind of building. Definitely a challenge.
Other questions for Sheila? Very good, thank you.
Randy Larkin, Senior Assistant City Attorney, just to remind the Commission that this is a rezoning matter, so you're sitting in a quasi-judicial capacity, so we probably, before we hear a public comment, disclose ex parte contacts so that everyone has the same information to base their decision, and people would have an opportunity to respond to anything that came outside of the hearing.
Okay, great, thanks Randy. Mr. Farmer, have you any ex parte conversations?
I'm not.
Mike?
Well, I think I talked to Steve Glass, I think he asked me if I had any questions, but I didn't, so.
Yeah, I didn't have any ex parte conversations other than discussion at the agenda meeting, I guess we talked a little bit about it within, within staff, but that's it.
Nothing, first time I've seen it tonight.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, very good, that covers our ex parte communications regarding this matter, is there any public comment on this?
Someone left the glasses up here.
Sheila.
Probably aren't strong enough for me to use. Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Steve Glass, I am one of the owners of GHB Investors, and with me is Daryl Bean, who's another, one of the investors, and H couldn't be here tonight. Let me just try and address two or three issues, I don't, I'm not gonna try and go through the whole thing, I think the information you have and Sheila's presentation have given you a, a pretty good view of what we're requesting. The first thing I want to mention is that we've owned this 25 years, we bought it with the intent of selling it, or developing it, and 25 years later, that's still our intent, but probably, given our advancing ages, we're probably looking more at selling than, than we are developing. But we've come to the conclusion that we're never going to be able to sell it to someone to use, for example, for a 50,000 square foot industrial-type building. And that's for a couple of reasons, one is the terrain, and, and the second is that there are more restrictive restrictions on lots in East Hills adjacent to the highway than there are on other lots in East Hills. For example, outside storage is more limited on, on this lot than, than it would be on others, so we just don't see any significant industrial enterprise wanting to locate there. I wanted to mention a couple of things, first, before submitting this to the city, I met with the, what's now called the Economic Development Corporation of Lawrence, which is the old Douglas County Development, Inc., entity, which is an offshoot of the Chamber, and they approved what we were proposing to do here. Secondly, the intersection issues, I understand, having owned the property on the other side of the highway and, and dealt with getting concrete trucks and dump trucks and various other vehicles on and off the highway in a safe fashion, I understand the concern, but I think there are three mitigating, mitigating factors that have developed in recent years or will be developing, in the case of one of them. First is KDOT, after numerous meetings with the businesses in East Hills and our business on the south side, put in the flashing yellow lights that flash when a vehicle approaches either on East Hills Drive or comes out from the Ready Mix Concrete Plant. That gives the oncoming traffic eastbound and westbound an indication that there is potential traffic conflict there. I think that's worked reasonably well, I'm not out there all the time anymore since I've retired, but I certainly haven't read in the paper about the volume of accidents that were occurring there, say, 10, 12 years ago. The second is the installation of the traffic signals at 23rd and O'Connell has created, has helped the situation for eastbound traffic, because it stops that traffic, creates a break in the traffic, which gives people, whether they're coming from the south or coming from the north, the opportunity to get into the eastbound lane, or in the case of the traffic on the south, to also get into the, to the westbound lane without having to dodge cars or trucks while doing that. And I think that will only, that impact will only increase when the connection is made to farmland, because the, I believe, I guess David's gone now, but I believe that signal there will be controlled by the traffic demand from the side streets, Chuck's shaking his head, correct? And so I think there'll be quite a few interruptions as farmland develops and as the, the people in East Hills use that intersection. And finally, and maybe the most major issue is that when the South Lawrence Trafficway is completed, and they're taking bids on that next month, so it's getting closer and closer, I would guess at least half the traffic will no longer be coming down 23rd Street. So you're gonna have a significant reduction in traffic both east and westbound, just because people will be choosing to use the South Lawrence Trafficway. And that interchange will be to the east of this location. So I, I think those three factors all mitigate the, the traffic concerns. With that, why don't I stop and see if you have any questions that I can address?
Any questions for Steve? Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Additional public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll back to the Commission on this. Commissioners, do you have any questions, staff, before we make a decision on this, or have any comments? I think the, my personal opinion is I think that the Planning Commission minutes are a little confusing for those of us who weren't there in that, I think, the, there's some, there was some discussion about what would and would not be allowed relative to fast food restaurants. That seems to me the, the major discussion, and I don't know if any of you have any comments or questions about that, but I think they did a pretty good job coming to a reasonable conclusion on what should and should not be allowed there, so, just wanted to.
I would agree, I thought they did a pretty good job of discussing this, it was a little confusing because they went back and forth, but I think the final thoughts were that, you know, since, since this was able to, some of the things that are going to be there now, such as a building for a gas station, would be similar to a fast food, and you'd probably have the same number of people coming in, that wouldn't, wouldn't cause any problems with safety for the public or increase safety problems. I think we need to try to encourage development, and it hasn't developed for 25 years. I know my lot is about 20 degrees and it drops about 80 feet in much less space than this, so it's very difficult to develop and very expensive. So I think to encourage some development here would be a good idea.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I think, I think the Planning Commission did a pretty thorough job of looking at, you know, the number of uses that would be allowed and not be allowed, appreciate the work that the applicant did in, in trying to come to a reasonable recommendation, also our staff, their thorough job of going through and making a positive recommendation here. Sometimes you have to make a change in zoning that's gonna help a piece of property be able to develop, and I think that's what they've done. Taken into consideration, you know, a number of the things that Mr. Glass brought up about how hard it is to develop in the East Hills, especially out at the K-10 highway side, I know that those, I was probably involved in putting some of those limitations on there, so. I think they were still a reasonable approach, but, you know, sometimes they're a little bit tough, but I think that it's good. One of the things that I did think is I was wondering how much of the, the development here may come, or, you know, the business, and supporting these businesses would come from the business park itself versus, you know, highway traffic that would pull in and out, but that's for another deal. But I do think it is a positive deal that the Planning Commission did, I think the uses are reasonable and I think we should approve.
Very good, Jeremy?
I feel the same way, I mean, pardon me, I've got some friends that work out at East Hills Business Park and, you know, it's a task for them and a 30-minute lunch to drive into town. And so to have something there, even though, you know, fast food wouldn't be ideal as opposed to, you know, a place where you can get something a little healthier, but that's not our call to make, to, to regulate decisions that people make, so. healthier, but that's not our call to make, to regulate decisions that people make. So, 25 years, we had the same, we didn't, I wasn't a part of this, but the Commission had the same discussion about Ninth and New Hampshire. You know, how long do we let that sit vacant? And so I think this is a good thing for us to do.
Okay. Any comments?
I move we approve ordinance number 8891.
This is a motion?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Shum, second by Vice Mayor Amick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda is to consider authorizing the mayor to sign a cooperation agreement with the Kansas Department of Transportation and Douglas County for the K-10 Bob Billings Parkway interchange.
We talked about this project briefly before, the interchange at the intersection of K-10 and Bob Billings Parkway. KDOT is planning on putting that out for bid next spring. They are currently working on finalizing the plans. They've acquired most of the right-of-way. Talked to them a little bit about some of the right-of-way today. And 1500 Road will no longer access K-10. It will go ahead and tie into George Williams Way. GL Inc. will be providing right-of-way in this curvilinear alignment, the existing right-of-way. We will, when the road project is done, we will vacate back to Jack Gomnitz. Tonight, the Commission is being asked to consider the cooperation agreement between the city, the state, and Douglas County. Douglas County will act on it tomorrow night. It's on their agenda. Basically, the agreement says that, there's a couple, three things. Number one, we'll be taking care of the rec path. The rec path will go under. There will be an underpass, or kind of similar to Sixth Street, but it will also tie into Bob Billings Parkway as well, above ground. We're also agreeing, the Bright House have a tract of land that sits over by Lake Point Drive. They have some farm equipment that they used to run down 1500 Road, and then they access K-10. With that being closed, and them having to access city streets, they requested an access onto Lake Point Drive. The city will build that, and KDOT will reimburse the city for that. That's in this agreement. We also have a piece of right-of-way that the state needs, and this one's a little harder to see, but essentially, we own this tract right here off the interchange area. And this red area, if you can see it, it's in your agenda packet, but the state needs that to facilitate or to complete the exit ramps and the rec path as well. So, they're asking us to donate that, which is contained within the city-state agreement. The final thing is the financial contribution. The city is agreeing to contribute $1 million in 2015 to this project. The county, $528,000. The total cost of the project estimated at 17.2 million. This was discussed as part of our Highway 40 Turnback Agreement. That included several other projects as well. I can answer any questions, if the Commission has any?
Any questions for Chuck? Thank you. Miss Quine? Yeah, Dave?
Just quickly, reminder, we have engaged BG Consultants to do the design work for the traffic signal at Bob Billings Parkway and George Williams Way. It's just a reminder of where that is. So, when that's designed, is finished, this project will probably be getting ready to bid. We'll probably bid it separately, but we'll be paying for that traffic signal under previously authorized debt obligation. The other thing is, is that this always brings up the issue of the city-owned property there. It's my recommendation that we wait until the final opening of this interchange. In my opinion, the value of that property will then be probably at its highest. We may want to then consider selling it. We'll see if we don't have a public city use for it. Obviously, we're getting a little bit of a city use or public use in regards to the pathway here. A contractor may want to talk to us about it being a lay-down area for the construction as well, but just want to keep that in mind. Somebody may say, "Well, why do we have that?" Well, we don't really have a city use in mind. We might come up with a city use, but it really doesn't fit, doesn't fit the need, for example, for a police facility. It's not large enough. So, anyway, wanted to, I don't want to have too much of a digression on your main issue here, but wanted to point that out because we don't really talk too much about that. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Is that outlined in the packet material?
Well, it is. You can see it. It's essentially this tract here. You see where it says City of Lawrence? Let's see. Oh, missed it.
In your agenda packet, where it shows the red Bob Billings, it also shows the track line, the very light.
If that helps anything.
Mine's kind of blurry.
Yeah, it's not.
How many acres is that that we own, approximately?
I think it's like six or seven. They're taking just a little bit of the property, but you're going, a developer's probably going to have to dedicate some of it just to develop on it anyway.
Does it front on any road, does it?
It will.
It's only adjacent to Bob Billings Way, right?
Yep.
Extended, yeah.
Okay, is there any public comment on this item? Just you?
Just me. Mr. Mayor?
Hi.
My name is Julie Hack. I live at 4300 Quail Point Terrace. Looking at the agenda item, I understand that I'm not quite on the right area, but I'd like you to listen to me for a few minutes anyway, and it won't be more than four. I have some observations and a question, if I may. I got in my car this morning and drove the four-mile approximately distance between Iowa Street and the barricades at the end of Bob Billings Parkway. And I counted 60 exits and entrances off of Bob Billings Parkway in that four-mile area. Lots of them, including churches, residences, businesses, and university-owned property, have other access to roads other than Bob Billings Parkway, but there are a few that are landlocked properties, is what I would call them. They include where I live in Quail Point, El Dorado Drive, Medina, and Alvamar Drive are all in the same situation. You go in and you come out onto Bob Billings Parkway. I cannot see that increased traffic on that road is going to get any better. It will only get worse. So, my question to you is, acknowledging that there's going to be a stoplight at George Williams Way, which I think is wonderful, there are, I hope that you have in plan other traffic controlling methods that will slow down the additional traffic that comes along there. And my, the other question is, are there these plans in place, sir? And if so, will they be implemented by the time the trafficway is open? Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Please.
Mrs. Hack, questions are good. We do not have plans in place for all of the traffic issues. We are in the process of looking at it. We will be responding to some of the traffic issues as they occur. We do have some maintenance of this area planned for 2014 along Bob Billings Parkway. So, as we do that maintenance, we'll be looking at some of those, some of those items. It is, it's a long stretch of road. Each area probably is going to need some level of thought. Some of it probably won't need any changes to it. But you already are familiar with the work that we're doing as far as maintenance is concerned. But we're going to be looking at, we've had some comments from some of the other property owners along this stretch, and we'll continue to look at it. But we don't have any specific plans, nor do we have any funding for any specific plans along that. A growing community is going to have more traffic, and that's what we will see on Bob Billings Parkway, is more traffic with the completion of this interchange in a couple of years.
So, just the one, so right now, the answer to her question is?
We're aware of the issue, but we don't have, we have neither plans nor funding outside of some of the maintenance work. We have identified a traffic signal at George Williams Way. We're going to be looking at other options, but we also, it's an arterial street that is designed to move people from one part of the city to another part of the city. Chuck, you can add.
Yeah, I think that works, but I might add a couple things. As we are doing some of our maintenance projects, like on Bob Billings between Castled and Iowa, you'll notice that we did take out and put turn lanes in to get people out of the, you know, moving traffic so they can make a safe left turn. Turn left, yeah, I thought you said you did. So, as we continue to work that way, we are aware that, you know, with more traffic, we're going to have to put in these left turn lanes so people can get off the road safely and have a safe place to turn from. David Woosley is also, they had a public meeting over a year ago. We had a lot of questions, the same questions Ms. Hack had brought up, you know, about the same areas. And David Woosley is currently looking right now, all the way from George Williams Way to Iowa, at that whole corridor, what we may need or may not need to do as far as traffic. So, we don't have the answers yet, but David's looking at them. We're hoping to get those probably by the end of this year, and then have that discussion with the community and the Commission as well. There may be some more signals warranted. There may not be, but we are aware of it, and we are trying to take the precautions or make the proper design changes as we rebuild 15th or Bob Billings, as we have done.
Chuck, along, looking at those things, do we ever do like a median speed study of arterial roadways? I mean, I understand, and I appreciate the comment by the city manager, that these roads are designed to carry, you know, large amounts of traffic and get them, you know, to and from conveniently. But do we ever look at what those median speeds are?
Yes.
And are they going up from time to time?
That's part of what David's looking at, the speeds, right now, current speeds, because on that section from Waukerusa to the church or George Williams Way, it's pretty wide open. And we've heard there's been some pretty high speeds, and I think David's got some information on that. So, he's looking at traffic, the development in the area, and the projected traffic volumes. You know, when the intersection opens up, I think they're expecting at least 5,000 more when it opens, and it will increase from there.
That was the discussion we had several weeks ago, when we looked at the stoplight at George Williams Way and Bob Billings, and that increased traffic. And, you know, you have that increased traffic, and now you, we talk about wide open and increased speeds. You know, I think, you know, the Commission being aware of those things, and maybe there's things that we can do to address it.
Yep, we're trying to, we'd like to at least have the recommendations to you before they open it up, and then we'll have to figure out how to fund any improvements that are needed.
Chuck, I think Julie has some very bona fide concerns. And one of the concerns, and I think as far as the average speed, I can tell you, I travel this two days a week, and when I'm going 45 or maybe slightly over that, people are passing me at 10 to 15 miles more on a consistent basis. So, I think that is a high-speed area, much higher than it's signaled, or it's what's registered for. But the other thing is, I think there'll be certain times of year, like around now, where the number of people coming through that will be, that we have to take into consideration, if there are temporary things we can do. And on game days and game nights for football and basketball, there'll be a tremendous increase of that. And safety issues I worry about, and I think those are things that we should be in concert with the people who live along there and use that, can go in and out, and can only go in and out there because they're landlocked. I think those are important things that we ought to keep in mind. There's obviously nothing we can do today, but I think, except to say that these are concerns, and I think they're legitimate concerns, and we should continue to look at them and see if they are a problem as we go along.
Yep.
What year does this get constructed in? Do we know that?
And they're going to bid it next spring, in 2014, and it's to be opened prior to or in conjunction with the SLT being completed, so...
Just 2015?
2015, 2016, yeah.
Additional public comment? Okay. Well, I think if we picked a street to extend to the SLT, fortunately, there aren't as many curb cuts and entries on this road as we have on some of the other streets that go across town. I think it was fortunate that, I was doing the same thing as Julie. I was kind of counting how many homes had access along 15th Street, now Bob Billings Parkway, and then as we go west further of Waukerusa. And there aren't near as many on that street as we have on a lot of the other ones. So, it's, at least we picked a good street to extend. What are you laughing at?
I was thinking of a way to slow the traffic down, and I say this completely tongue-in-cheek, so Chad, don't write about this, but drones with radar guns.
By the way, that always...
It would be...
That always works.
It doesn't work very well. So, drones are, is your answer, huh?
Yeah.
So, anyway. All right, enough of that drone. So, anyway, I think we've got, we're fortunate, we have this opportunity, and we also need to embrace the need for proper control and the flow of traffic. And I heard two Commissioners mentioning radar and police officers, so that's one way to encourage people to slow down. But I think if we engineer these roads properly, and we put in the proper traffic control devices, we should, this should be an effective route for us to move people from east to west and vice versa.
One thing it will do is it'll take a lot of pressure off the north-south activity in front of Langston Hughes School. And that is a major route out right now, where you go down Bob Billings Weston, turn and go north to get out to Sixth, then out to K-10. So, I think that's a plus for the addition.
There's traffic on Sixth Street, too.
Yes. And Julie, I appreciate what you have to say, because I live on St. Andrews, so I'm out there turning with you and everyone else that lives up there.
Okay.
I think we should try to find a way to, you know, make it safer to turn on and off, because if you're turning left onto Bob Billings Parkway from Alvamar Drive, and that's a, and I've made that turn several times, and it's kind of nerve-wracking.
Yeah.
Cars coming down off the hill. And so, I don't know what we can do, Chuck, to, you know...
David's also looking at site this, this is the stuff. So, we'll give a better report here, back here.
So, hold us accountable, Julie.
She's my neighbor.
Uh-oh.
I've got him, Bill. Hostage here.
And appropriately so.
All right.
Let's do something here.
So, do we have a motion to discuss and/or approve or authorize the mayor to sign this cooperation agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Amick, second by Commissioner Shum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. And the next item on the agenda is to receive a presentation from the city auditor regarding city-county cooperation.
I can, I guess, start talking. Good evening. Mike Glinsky, city auditor. Where do I get this thing off? There. Thank you. It should come in any minute then. There we go. So, I'll present tonight this performance audit related to city and county cooperation. The project had two objectives. The project had two objectives. They were basically to try to identify as many of these examples where the city and the county are cooperating as I could, and then pull a sample of those and match them up against some, I guess what I call good practices from literature. I identified quite a lot of these, and they cover a really broad range of services. The slide here lists just some examples to give you a sense of the range. Everything from some fairly small maintenance of baseball diamonds and use of baseball diamonds, up to, who I have on here? Emergency communications capital improvements, some really big, major services. We also have some of what I would call handshake agreements. These are areas where the city and the county are systematically cooperating, but the agreement is not written. It's a kind of handshake agreement. This covers some of the examples. I'm sure there are more of these than we're aware of, and some of them are probably really minor. Handshake agreements aren't necessarily a problem. You don't want to have to make everything incredibly formal, but in some cases, you want to formalize probably some of these handshake agreements. I thought it was interesting that the cooperation that I could identify seems to have increased fairly sharply in recent years. In terms, this is just the number of areas where the city and the county are cooperating. The really large cooperation happened often earlier. The construction of the law enforcement center, which was, I think, one of the agreements in '71. And the EMS system, which was, I want to say '95, '96, something like that. But overall, the number seems to be increasing recently. So I put together a list of good practices for these sort of agreements in city and county cooperation. There's a fair amount of literature out there in public administration on what, how to cooperate, how, you know, local cooperation should take place. It basically boils down to four themes. That is defining the service, figuring out how the funding or resources are going to be shared and the approach to that, designing some administrative approaches. Things like if there's going to be purchasing, is it the city's purchasing policies or the county's purchasing policies we're going to follow? Things like that. How the money will actually be transferred, or the resources will transfer, things like that. And finally, establishing mechanisms to oversee the services. To some extent, when it's a cooperative service, there's a, it's not directly accountable to either governing body. It's sort of accountable, the accountability is a little bit spread. And so this establishing monitoring mechanisms can be especially important. So then I pulled, I pulled just five agreements and matched them up against these good practices. I picked agreements that I thought covered both the range of time that I looked at, as well as tried to get at different kinds of services. This shows, shows the five. There wasn't any particular, I didn't want to look at anything really small. I didn't look at the, you know, maintenance of Broken Arrow Park, which we share. But I also wanted to cover kind of a range of services. And there were gaps. As you do any of these kind of projects and you look at, I call them good practices, but maybe we should call them best practices, you'll find gaps. This is a little bit of a summary of those kind of gaps. There were, there were things that we could have done better, pretty much in every area and every agreement. I think that the, if I got the slide right here. The issue with these gaps, I think, is because we don't really have a consistent method for how we put these agreements together. Part of that is that it's been happening over a long period of time. But part of it is that we just haven't seen the sort of common approaches, and we tend, I think, to approach things as a one-of occurrence. And there are, however, some really overlapping kind of themes that we ought to be looking at. I've got a slide here that talks about sort of one of the reasons we need to look at these kind of systematic approaches. And the, one of the best practices is to talk about how you're going to make that transfer of a payment. And in one of the agreements I looked at, we didn't do that. And the county had committed a little over 1.2 million to fund their new fire station. And for reasons it's a little hard to figure out, that transfer never happened. Now, in 2012, we became aware of it, or the county became aware of it, or something happened, and we sort of were given credit for that in a different agreement. But that's something sort of falling through the cracks. I think we need to strengthen our processes to try to reduce the chances of that sort of issue. I didn't want to stop with just something that seemed like it wasn't maybe the best. So I looked at an agreement where we did, I think, a pretty good job in the agreement of establishing a monitoring mechanism to try to address accountability. And that's a very recent agreement for funding senior services. It's an agreement with the Douglas County Senior Services, DCSS, where both the city and the county are providing funding. The agreement makes it reasonably clear what the executive director's responsibilities are, and requires regular reporting to you guys, quarterly and annual reporting. So that's a, that's a process that's really pretty strong, I think, and included in one of the agreements. I made just two recommendations. One of those is that we should allow for those informal handshake agreements. We don't want to say that the city and the county can only cooperate when it goes through a long, complicated process, but there ought to be some kind of guidelines for when staff ought to say, let's take a step back and try to formalize this. And the other one is to develop sort of general guidelines on the consistent method, I think is what I called it, for entering into these kind of cooperative agreements. I want to make it clear that a consistent method doesn't mean that every agreement's the same. Agreements still need to be tailored to the particulars of the service, and they vary with the type of service and the, you know, the sort of importance and the longevity of a process. That's it. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I say here that the report is online. I didn't get around to uploading it today. I'll do that first thing in the morning. It's available on the commission agenda, though. So be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Michael? All right, does anybody know? Dave was looking at you.
I have some comments you could do.
Do you? Please, I appreciate that.
I did provide a response to Michael's review, and I think it's helpful. And I do think that a good checklist as we go into these agreements to ensure that we're capturing some of the basics are important. We have gotten good marks as far as our city-county cooperation. It primarily is cooperation with the county. We cooperate with the school district and other entities as well, University of Kansas, obviously rural water districts and a number of other entities. But primarily, we've gotten good marks on that. What I hope is, is that Michael's report is, it's a good report for its items, but I hope it doesn't end the discussion of increased cooperation. You all have heard me, particularly at budget time, and you will continue to hear me at budget time, that our opportunities for efficiencies are something that we're always on the lookout for. I continue to think that the efficiencies with increased cooperation, primarily with the county, are where we're going to be able to see further ways to stretch our tax resources. And my reading of the literature is, is that consolidation discussion usually only occurs at crisis points in communities, where there's a cathartic event, where something really bad has happened in a community, whether it's poor government, or poor economy, or those types of things, and then everybody gets excited about consolidation. And when things are moving along relatively well, we don't really focus very much on that. I think that's unfortunate, but that's kind of the, maybe there's probably some life lessons in there as well. But I hope that we can continue to have active discussions about how we can look for efficiencies, avoiding duplicate taxation for similar services. We've heard about that, we've talked about it, we've had individual discussions. We haven't really had very much in the way of corporate discussions. We've had very little community discussion about it. And I hope that at the appropriate forums and at the appropriate time, we can continue that. Again, this is, really wasn't Michael's charge in that report. I kind of agree with his items. We want to have better agreements, and we want to have strong checklists. We do a lot of things very well. We do a lot of the handshake agreements where I agree to do this, and Craig agrees to do that, and it just happens, and it works well. And some of those things probably need to be formalized, I think Michael's pointing out that's correct, and others don't, and he points that out as well. So, and I don't take disagreement with the report. I just want to see us move forward in this area in the future. We're not going to happen, nothing's going to happen tonight. Probably nothing's going to happen this month, maybe not this year. But I think that we will get more. This community has very high expectations for its municipal governments. We want to keep that high. But we also are going to be challenged with resources, and we want to look for efficiencies. And you have also heard me talk about the duplicate taxation issues as well. And public administration usually boils down to two words, who pays? And that's a fair question for this issue. Probably is the question for this issue. So I don't want to monopolize the last agenda item here and look forward to your discussion on this as well. But I want an opportunity to say that, try to say it in the letter as well. Thank you.
Along with what David said, you know, Mike, I appreciate the report and, you know, how agreements need to be handled, you know, in the future. And I appreciate things that you pointed out. But Dave, rather than wait until budget time next year to talk about better ways to cooperate with county and county government, I think that we probably ought to have those discussions now. You know, we kind of get all in the middle of budget time, and they kind of, it's got to take a little bit of a backseat. And I know that there's some things that, you know, both the county and the city, both governing bodies and city and county staff feel really important about, different things that, you know, we could have stronger cooperation with now, and maybe even, you know, individually taking control of various parts of the government, one over the other, so that both of us aren't doing a duplication. So I think that we ought to have those discussions now, rather than wait until we get in the middle of budget time next year.
Yeah. It's always better to have these conversations when we're not under stress, especially these financial ones.
If I Craig on down, we'll have a nice discussion.
Yeah.
I think this is particularly important because I think when you go through something like this and you have a checklist, you have the ability to do it. If, you know, government, intergovernmental cooperation sometimes can be a personality-driven. It can be a good thing or it can be a bad thing. Right now, personalities get along very well. And I think if there's a time where there is a discordance there, I think this type of cooperative agreement, we're looking at things in a very pragmatic and very specific way, would minimize any of those difficulties that might occur in the future. And I think that's always good to try to increase our cooperation, and I think this would do that. So I think the report was a very nice report in that respect.
Very good. Thank you, Chuck.
I may say that one of the things that I've been the most excited about in hearing this report is to have the opportunity to say that there's not a lot of public conversation that happens between the three governing bodies that exist in our community. So the school district, county, and city commissions. And I think there's an opportunity there for us to try to figure out a way to do that better. You know, I don't know what the rules are in having joint meetings, in a sense, with different governing bodies, but I think that there's, I think that's necessary. You know, the school district and the county and city commissions' work is very intertwined with one another, but yet very separate. And so I don't think, I don't think we need to be looking back a year from now on this saying, gosh, we probably should have had different conversations or any at all. So I don't know what the, I don't know what the answer there is, but I guess I would just throw out for our consideration at a later point, perhaps in the fall, to figure out how we might be able to do that and what we might be able to accomplish. Because there's a lot of important work that's done between those governing bodies, and I think that it could be done more effectively and more streamlined if we were to have those conversations in public with everybody, rather than just, you know, via phone call when something happens and trying to get it figured out. So I know Dave and Craig talk all the time, and, you know, Dave probably talks to Rick Dole all the time, too, and Craig probably talks to Rick, and et cetera, et cetera. But I think it's important for us to have that conversation be included in it as well.
Agreed. Yes, Michael.
Commissioner, several years, I don't know how long ago it was, we used to have, what, annual or semi-annual meetings with the other governing bodies? But I think, you know, we can go back to something like that, where we could talk about, you know, various, you know, projects important to all three of the governing bodies, or even problems, you know, the other, you know, government, you know, levels of government that may be having troubles with things and need help in. But I do think one thing, as we look at, you know, the state government, and we're fortunate to be able to have a project to finish the interchange at the west end of Bob Billings a minute ago, and appreciate all the help that we're going to get there. Truth of the matter is, is that the strength in government is probably going to happen more from the local and the way that we combine efforts and get things done. So, you know, that cooperation between the various levels locally are going to be the best way to be able to get those things done. So I think if there's a way to go back and start those meetings on some kind of regular basis, I think that that would be good.
Well, but it can't, to me, it can't be, it can't be an ego-driven thing in the sense that, you know, I don't think meetings are productive to talk about all the things that we've accomplished that have been great. I mean, I see like an issue as economic development with what the school district has going on. I mean, I think that, you know, Bob, you've been a part of those meetings with the Joint Economic Development Council, and that really was a collaborative effort amongst two governing bodies. But the school district now is kind of this third part with their new center that they're going to have wherever they're going to put it. And so I think that conversation, how can we best work together to facilitate a community conversation centered around working together towards a common goal of economic development? What things policy-wise can we do? What things policy-wise can the school district do and the county itself do to mobilize each other and our resources and the knowledge that each staff from those three governing bodies has? And the political will to really, to push forward certain agendas about what we all kind of want to share, you know, what we all want to accomplish together in the community. Nobody in the election this year was not talking about economic development. Everybody was, even the school district. I mean, this was a part of things that they said. So how can we take that political will and do something with it?
I think one other thing that I would add, and I agree with Jeremy, and I think he makes very good statements, but also the University of Kansas would be an important aspect of this as an independent body with governmental ties. And I think they're probably almost, if not important, just as important as the other two, or all three of the other of us as a governing body. So I think we've gone ways of increasing the communication with the university over the years. I think we should, when we consider these other two, I think we should consider that as a fourth.
Great point. Thank you.
You know, Michael, one of the areas that I think that we showed a lot of cooperation, I didn't see it on your list, was when they were trying to locate the shelter in the county. I mean, probably that was more informal than anything. They ended up buying the land and then making it available for us to purchase. So there's lots of things that go on there, but I thought that was a, I thought it was tremendous cooperation to get that very difficult site located, and it's up and running now, so pretty cool stuff.
All right. That's it? You want to, motion to accept Michael's report?
Boot.
Second. Oh, public comment, I'm sorry, yes. I'm sorry, everyone had gone, you're here still, I'm sorry.
KT Walsh, I would just like to remind everybody that if we're talking about our county, there are three universities. There's Baker, Haskell, Indian Nations, and KU. So I think it would be appropriate that everyone be included. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Keeping us on track. Any other comment? Any other comment? Okay, so, presentation proceed.
Seconded.
Second by Farmer, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, five-zero. Thank you, Michael. Next is general public comment. Do we have any this evening?
Okay, I know, this is ridiculous, but...
No, it's not.
And I'll, I'll keep it short. I would like to talk about the railroad spur at Sixth and Kentucky, about. I went down to the Journal World, and at least the front office told me they no longer use it to bring in paper like they used to. They have it all brought in by semi-trucks, and I've noticed how much it slows down traffic. Out-of-towners don't know, they can't stop where the spur is. If you've ever been caught up short behind a school bus or a public bus, and there are three places where buses have to stop by law, and it's just a bit of a jam, and it, it looks like it's in pretty bad shape. So I stopped David Cronin out here because I thought I needed to get on his agenda about traffic. He said, no, no, that's a KDOT issue. And he said, and KDOT can do it, they can exempt it, meaning they put up signs that say this is no longer a crossing, you no longer have to stop. So I'm bringing it up just as a suggestion. We briefly discussed it at the Lawrence Association of Neighborhoods, and the police officers told us that they thought there was some mechanism. So I think it'd be a good thing for a future agenda or to hand off to staff, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think we talked about it recently. Yes, Dave?
We did.
Not, yeah, well, we, we, we did.
We believe we are having good discussions with the appropriate parties about the removal of those railroad tracks. It doesn't move as quick as some trains, but we are having good discussions. I think KT's got a very good point. I mean, I think the, I think it's been several years since World Company's received any deliveries via train. Not that I look out the window all the time and watch it, but I think it's been, it's been a long time. So, well, we're having communications with the right folks, World Company, and then also BNSF, and hope to be able to give you some more information, and appreciate KT mentioning. I think that the exemption would be something that we could pursue if it doesn't look like we're going to get the train tracks removed, but that's, that's our desire, because there's a, there's probably some confusion among some people about whether that's active or not. We've got some people that know that it's okay to pull over them, and then they also, then there's other people that know that the law says no, you can't stop on them when there's a, when they're stopped at a traffic signal. So there's, we think the right thing to do is if they're not going to be used, is to seek their removal.
Agreed. I, I would agree. I've seen, I've go down that road a lot, and, and when people stop unexpectedly, and it's not unexpected for the bus driver, but it's unexpected for the large car behind them. I've seen a couple times where there could have been an accident there, so I, I, I agree with that, comments of removing them.
Okay. Well, you'll update us when you have any further progress. Thanks, KT. All right, any other public comment? Future agenda items?
You see those listed commissioners there for a meeting on the 27th? Your Public Incentive Review Committee favorably recommended the proposed property tax abatement for, for sunlight at this afternoon's meeting, so you'll be having the public hearing on that next week. The city staff's recommending some changes on our laws regarding upholstered furniture on porches, and a few other items there as well.
Very good.
And I told Dave this this afternoon, I'll be coming back from Chicago next Tuesday, and I should be back, but...
We'll get started without you if you don't show up.
If I, my plane doesn't show up, I won't be here.
We're not, we're not waiting.
Please don't.
We hope you make it back. As far as commission items go, there's one thing I needed to bring up. Based on the recommendation from Perk today, we made a positive recommendation for the sunlight abatement, but it brought up a good point and one I want to address with the commission, in that we selected a $5 million cutoff for the evaluation of these types of incentives in the past, and in the recent past, in the last four or five years, we did that. One thing I'd like the commission to discuss is perhaps reassessing that number based on the fact that this case, there was unanimous approval of a, of a company that was probably half of that $5 million cutoff. So we, we thought that it would be important for us to recognize that we deviated from that, and that perhaps the commission wanted to reevaluate the cutoff for consideration for public incentives of this nature. So I wanted to bring that up and see about either discussing it in a meeting or having staff prepare a, a new set of standards, or maybe revisit the minutes where we created that $5 million distinction and determine maybe what surrounded that and, and perhaps how what we did today may confuse that issue a little bit.
Mayor, one of the things, too, that we, that was brought up right at the end of that meeting also was with that $5 million, $5 million threshold on the investment side, was also to have discussion about special consideration given to the small businesses coming out of the BTBC as, because this is our, our first business to, you know, graduate from the facility and, and see if, if there is a different standard that should be used on considering those businesses for special incentives.
Right. And, and part of this is, we haven't had that many tax abatement requests recently, not to mention, I think, the nature of the small business startup has changed, and the necessary infrastructure improvements and investments are lower maybe now than we maybe originally anticipated, or, or maybe we wanted to focus on large-scale manufacturing, but in reality, maybe the future of our business development opportunities will be technology and business and smaller level incentives. So first with the BTBC graduates, and then maybe even consider any small business that is looking for either growth or re-establishing roots here in Lawrence or just moving here in general. I, I would like, I would like maybe us to consider that cutoff, but, but, but I think it's something the commission needs to decide, because we, we are the ones that, the, the city commission set the standard historically, and I think we need to probably change it if we're going to continue to, you know, assess it.
Let's just have the staff come back to us with all the information that surrounds it, and make an adjustment to it if that's what we want to do, so.
All right, so I'm, I'm formally request that it's okay, the staff, to take a look at our, the minutes revolving, surrounding that decision, and then maybe revisit that.
And when you have that report back, I think one of the items we're going to ask you is whether or not you want to refer it to the Joint Economic Development Council. One of their charges is to look at economic development policy. You, you all will decide whether or not it's, you know, of an appropriate level or not. And some people might think it's fine-tuning, some might think it's a larger policy issue. You all can, you all can decide that when you get our report, whether or not you want to refer it on to them.
So anyway, that came up tonight. I was, I told them that I would bring it to the commission level today. Any other commission items? Besides you might miss the meeting next week? The calendar, anything we need to be discussing here?
Tomorrow night, that, you know, here, for the, is the rental registration meeting in, in this room?
Yes, sir.
Tomorrow. I'll be there. I'm going to try to be, five to six, five to seven, something like that.
Five to six. Just a hope.
Okay. Very good. Anything, anything else discussed on the calendar? If not, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Moved. Seconded.
Motion to adjourn the meeting by Commissioner Shum, seconded by Vice Mayor Amick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, five-zero.